Dear. Thank you. Just the volume. You need to shut the TV on.
Too late now.
Can you hear me?
Shh.
Audi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'm not home and I'm on a different computer and it's not showing the same way, so I'm confused.
Is this who's talking, Bobby or Michelle?
It's Counselor Coker.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I can, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, your mic's live.
Can you guys still hear me?
Yes, I can.
I can hear you. Okay, thank you.
If your study could, I mean, you will.
Yeah.
Andy, Wheaton, Burton.
Particularly the old yesterday, she was sitting there, it kind of looked like a day at home. She was cuddling up in her snuggly. Yeah, that one who for some reason was running around in this shirt.
Mark, there it is. Thank you, Audi, for hollering out at me. I had to go in the other room to grab my phone and, um, and I heard your voice. Thank you.
Chief, you look like Kilroy. All I can see is just nose up.
How we doing on time? Where are we at? We at seven?
Seven o'clock straight up and I believe you have all the council here, ma'am.
Good. All right, let's call this meeting to order of the Oak Ridge City Council on May 6th at 7:00 PM by audio and in person possibly. So, let's begin by reciting the Fledges Allegiance. Brian, will you lead us?
Ma'am. Fledges Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, welcome. Glad you can be here. Jackie, will you call the roll?
Counselor Beerson.
Here.
Counselor Whitney. Counselor Coker.
Here.
Counselor Hollit. Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Counselor Spleedoff.
Here.
Everyone but Chrissy was here.
Let's watch for her to dial, dial in. I'm sure she will in just a bit. So, let's move on to additions, corrections, and adjustments to the agenda. I am going to, as we have talked about before, move the appointments, which is item number 15, up to, uh, below item number eight. So, the first thing after the consent agenda. Counselor Kenyon, and so that we can help with our appointments and, and get them on their way or they can choose to stay for the whole evening if they'd like. Counselor Kenyon.
Yes, I would like to add to the agenda, under the reports of boards, commissions, and committees, a report from the admin committee.
Okay. We will add that. So, that will be 11.1.2.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I would ask that if I moved to, on to 12, that you stop me.
Okay.
Okay, just in case. All right. Well, if there are no other additions or corrections or adjustments, Brian, was there anything that you needed to do?
No, just to draw attention that there was a revised supplemental budget exhibit sent out and draw their council's attention to that.
All right, let's move on to, to public comment. So, do we have anybody at the whack, Brian?
We have some volunteer candidates. Anyone else want to make a comment, just a general comment? No, nothing here, ma'am.
Okay, and so, those of you that are online, if there is anybody who wanted to make a public comment, please unmute yourself or if you know how to raise your hand. I see Dan Barclay's hand. I see Trudy Hammond is unmuted herself and has raised her real hand. All right, so, let's, let's move forward. Dan, go ahead and unmute yourself and the floor is yours.
Well, I'm quite happy to let Ms. Hammond go first. I mean, ladies first and all that sort of thing.
That's okay, Counselor Barker, or Mr. Barclay, please go ahead.
Okay, and just for everybody's edification, Alt-Y is how you raise your hand. I figured that out. At any rate, I just wanted to thank mayor and council for correcting what I now know is a lifelong deficiency in my personal vocabulary, for a word that is always imposed to command to be followed or list etched in stone thousands of years ago that myself and 2.2 billion current members believe shall not be done. Quite literally, only God knows how many former members also knew what shall not be done. It actually never occurred to me that the city charter was vague, archaic, and outdated as elected officials making those claims have never identified what specifically is vague or archaic or outdated. But in the day since, I now know that a simple five-letter word that is always clearly imposed to duty for identifying one of 10 sins for thousands of years and billions of people has now become too problematic for politicians, bureaucrats, and lawyers unwilling or unable to grasp the boundaries of their authority. Prior to the 4/15/21 meeting, I was certain that the integrity of the Oak Ridge City Charter had been compromised over this last six or seven years. When procedural air replaced process, honor was set aside in lieu of malfeasance and the city charter was routinely accused of saying things it never did. For me, the city charter forms not only the framework for how we want our community to be governed, as stated in the state of the city, but also the foundation upon which that framework is built. Any framework relies on its foundation for support, but multiple years of neglect, deceit, contempt, distortion, and interpretation of the document have compromised and weakened the foundation. As naive as it may seem, the first logical step in repairing that damage would be to understand the difference between implementing and interpreting it so that any changes are made to charter made whole again, not piecemeal. I suppose the best part for me is that I've never been or will ever be a politician, bureaucrat, or lawyer. Cannot say with conviction that the current charter as written actually works, as the opportunity to do so has been denied for most of its existence. No doubt, council, their appointee, and the committee selected by council will identify the flaws, if any, in the current document, as you cannot fix something without knowing what is broken, and craft a revised version of their contract, subject to approval by the citizens, of course, and simple enough for public officials to comprehend. Thank you.
Please mute yourself. Good job. And I believe you said Alt-Y raises hands. I think that's a good thing to repeat for everybody. Trudy, uh, where did you go? Trudy? There you are. I'm sorry, I know you didn't go away, just I lost you on my screen. Go ahead, please.
I'm Trudy Hammond, 477-52 Berry Street. And I'd just like to make a note of how I feel. I feel the need to express that I believe we, the electorate, expect a republic that is about loving our government to preserve it. We have been advocating for change in our relationship with our local government as the electorate. When ego becomes a directive, a lack of integrity grows that fosters diminished transparency. We have options as voters, recall and recalls are just Band-Aids upon broken arms. And our citizens who employ our local government via the electorate, we decide when we need an amputation. We want our rights, our families, and our properties protected. This comes from a stormy political of national and local government involvement that I've been in lately. And my latest rescue that demanded a $3,000 payment for an elderly dog, Vixen, who lost her only family, her human daddy, next of kin was an ex-wife who didn't have the money to save the dog's life or leg. And I did both, not to boast or boost my ego, not because I can afford $3,000 plus, but because it was the fact that Vixen was traumatized alone and in need. Her amputation was successful and she will be home soon to her new home, new family, new life, and change will be her biggest triumph. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Trudy. Okay, Dawn, Counselor Kenyon, I saw your hand momentarily, but I don't see it now. Are we good? We must be good. Okay, Count, Mr. Barclay, your hand is still up, so when you get a chance, will you un-Alt-Y it or whatever you do? Is there any others? I don't see any other public comments. Okay, let's move on. Mayor's comments, announcements, and proclamations. Let's see. I guess I better stop this timer before it goes off. I am, uh, let's see, we have a couple of, an event coming up later on in the month. It's a Firewise, uh, Firewise event and I think we'll be hearing a little bit more about that. Grace, are you going to talk about that later on? Is Grace on the line today?
I am here. I wasn't planning on talking about it tonight, but I'm happy to share a couple of details if you'd like.
Okay, well, this is on council, this is on the 21st. I mentioned it this time because it would be the day after our, our next council meeting on the 20th. Grace, can you give just a quick overview for me? And this information, I believe, is coming out in your water bills. So, those of you who get water bills, be sure and check that also. Grace, can you briefly share what we're doing here?
Yes, absolutely. This event is being planned mostly by the Forest Collaborative. It's going to be on May 21st from 5:00 to 7:30 at Green Waters Park, and it's going to be a community wildfire safety night. So, we're going to hear a lot about Firewise and we're going to hear from the Forest Service and what homeowners can do to kind of help protect the community. We will also be distributing air purifiers through Oak Ridge Air and we'll have folks tabling to give information about wildfire, air quality, and emergency preparedness. And we do have a flyer, like the mayor said, that's going out in the water bill, and I can email that to council now.
I appreciate that. Counselor Coker and council in general, I would, I would just offer the suggestion that it might be a nice opportunity to have a table. We will have tables from other, other agencies there, but it might be nice to have a council table there or especially a public safety table there. So, that if people have questions, we can help answer those questions as it relates to wildfire safety in our communities. Counselor Coker, I'm happy to talk to you about that and we can make logistics on that if people want to do. Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Kathy. Let's set up a time and get together and do that. That sounds great. Thank you. Thank you. And other than that, I just want to remind everybody that we are having our last clinic for vaccinations. No, are we, Brian? Yes. The last clinic is, is this Friday, this Saturday? We aren't having no more, no further first or, at all, any other vaccination clinics because we just haven't had the, the need because people have not signed up. So, that is the reason why we aren't having any if the community asks. If, you know, as this goes on, things change and a need arises, we can be flexible and, and again, put that in. And so, I just want to make sure that anytime you get an opportunity to thank those involved, this was a good concerted team effort to get this done for our community and we are at 40% vaccination rate in the community of Oak Ridge, which is, which I think is pretty good. I wish, I could say it was 80% or 90%, but 40 I will take. So, that's good. I will move on and go to council comments. Council, do you have any comments before we move on? Okay. I'll give everyone a minute to hit the click button if they're waiting. Oh, Chrissy, thank you for, for doing that. I meant to acknowledge that Counselor Hollit is, is now in the room and we missed you right at the beginning, but glad you're here.
That's okay, I only missed a couple of minutes. I was curious if we were going to talk a little bit about the whack tonight. There was something else from the meeting last night that we were going to push off to council meeting and I guess I didn't write it in my notes, so I can't remember what it was. But I actually am wondering if we can put somewhere in the agenda tonight to speak a little bit about what Mr. Barclay touched on the city charter.
If you, if you would like to, just address something from the city charter? Yes, absolutely, if you'd like to.
Sure.
So, we'll put that at 9.2 and I'll call on you. And as I said to Dawn, if I go to number 10, stop me and remind me, but I do have it written now. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Nope. So, let's move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is the approval of minutes from March 18th, 24th, April 8th, and 15th. Do I hear a motion? I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda. This is Counselor Coker. I second. Seconded by Counselor Coker. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Spleedoff.
Hi. There's a lot of background noise.
Lot of fuzziness going on, guys. Do we know where this is coming from?
Counselor Kenyon.
Aye.
Counselor Whitney.
Aye.
Aye.
Was that Counselor Coker?
Um, no.
Aye.
Okay. Counselor Bjornson.
Aye. Sorry, I didn't know if you called me. I can't, couldn't hear anything for a second.
Counselor Hollit.
Aye.
Okay, that's all. I'm, I'm looking to see if I can figure out where the, where the noises are coming from, but hopefully that'll die down. We'll jump on it if it doesn't. All right, so at this time, we're going to move, we've moved appointments up, so we're going to go after those first. And so, at the back of your packet, we have agenda item number 15 now in front of your packet. Brian, will you introduce this?
Ma'am, it's, uh, item number 15, not 9.1, but it's, say, let's see, I'm sorry, wrong one. Hang on. It is item 15 and it's considering appointment of members to committees and we're looking for a motion to, from the floor to appoint. The submitted applications were the exhibits. We've got citizen volunteers for library board, ODUAC slash RTMP, desire to serve on both, and Parks and Community Services. You've been through the applications, if you've read through the packet. Your choices are to appoint one at a time or not appoint. And I've got a motion down there that's got some blanks in it, so just fill in the blank.
And are, are applicants at the whack or have they dialed in?
Um, Ms. Yoder and Mr. Rob, Earth or Whack, Ms. Burnell, I don't know if she's online or not. I didn't see her check in.
I will say out loud to council, we have Yoder, Ms. Yoder and Mr. Rob here, so we'll go ahead and do that. And since this, the agenda usually has this at the very end, if Ms. Burnell dials in later on, we'll go ahead and insert that in. So, at this time, Julia, if you're there, would you step forward and just state your name and what you're applying for and why you'd like to be, continue to be on the board?
Let me, let me give you one second to switch the microphone around.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm Julia Yoder and I'm just reapplying to continue serving on the library board. I have served for three years and I am currently the secretary. So, I'd like to continue being the secretary.
Thank you, Julia. Counsel, do you have any questions of Julia?
You pointed your ear. What does that mean?
You're, you're a little weak, Mary. You can't, the sound.
Okay, hold on. We'll give it a try. How's that?
Much better.
Uh, thank you, Trudy, for your, your pantomimes. Counsel, do you have any questions of Julia? Okay. We thank you very much and we'll call Mr.
Audi or Counselor.
Oh, Audi, I'm sorry. Julia, sit down. Go ahead, Audi.
Okay. I'm on the board with you.
Hi, Audi.
And I know you, I've watched you do your notes and stuff and I would like to ask how often do you put out any notations?
How often? I say it again?
Put out minutes, counsel?
Yes.
At each meeting. Yeah, so what I would do, I type up the minutes as the meeting is rolling and then I, I get it all edited the next day and I email it within 24 hours to the other board members.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Oh, wait, I heard, um, Audi, did you have something further?
No, that's all. I'm done.
Okay.
The last meeting?
Audi, Julia wanted to know if you got the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll have to go back and check. I didn't. I didn't see it.
Okay, well, I'll make sure to email them again, just to make sure that you got them.
Because sometimes they go into a junk mail, so.
Sure, well, you want to check your spam.
All right, Counsel Bjornson, go ahead, and then Counsel Hollit.
Thank you, mayor. I don't have a specific question for Ms. Yoder. I just wanted to put it out there that I would prefer personally if we do the appointments separately. Just my preference. Thank you.
I agree.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have a question for Ms.
All right, that sounds fine. So, uh, council, Julie is applying for the library board. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve Julia Yoder for the library board, three-year term.
I second.
Okay, so Counsel Hollit made the motion and Counsel. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Counsel Kenyon made the motion and Counsel Spleedoff seconded it. Is there any further discussion on council? If there is no discussion, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Hollit.
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Whitney?
Aye.
Counsel Kenyon?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Okay. We look forward to you serving again and we appreciate your commitment to the community and to the library, which we all enjoy.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on then, I don't see Wanda, who is, or Ms. Burnell, who is dialed in at all, so let's move forward. Mr. Rob, would you like to step forward?
Thank you. Hi. Would you like to tell us your name and what you are asking to be on and why you would like to be on it?
Leo Robb, the Parks Board, and I've been walking through the Diamond View Park, it's a park that's been in Oak Ridge for a while. And I see the kids and their parents up there riding the bikes and stuff, and it bothered me that the track itself wasn't being mowed. So I started mowing myself and I got a neighbor that goes in and we did it the last time with us. And I met with Brian and Robert out there, they're talking about expanding into a covered area. And I gave some input like that. And Eugene Cathart wants to kind of modify that track to make it a better pump track. So I'd like to help him do that, I'm interested in the parks. While I was waiting here, I went out and looked at the park, at the activity center, and just looking at it. So I'm interested in being on the committee and helping.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I appreciate you applying. It's nice that we are seeing more and more volunteers reach out to do something in their community on a formal basis with the council. I know that's kind of a scary thing to do because council traditionally hasn't been very welcoming. And we are hoping to change that, and I think we're doing a good job with that. So let's move forward. Counsel, do you have any questions of Mr. Rob? Counsel Kenyon, I see a hand.
Hi, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Leo, I noticed on your application that it said that you were concerned about when the shelter is expanded. Can you explain that specifically? I'm not sure.
I thought it was like going to the existing pump track and I was afraid it. So previously they modified some stuff for the bathroom and they took the dirt and just wasted it. My concern is if they're going to expand that track, not expand it, change it some, we want that dirt saved. So that was my concern.
Oh, yeah.
And talking to Eugene and Robert, I think we've got that covered.
And then my second question would be, have you attended any of the Parks Committee meetings?
No.
Okay, I wanted to make sure you're aware that there's something else that that committee does, is it community services? And I wanted to make sure that was okay with you.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Motion, please?
I move that, I make a motion that we appoint Leo Robb to serve on the Oak Ridge Parks and Community Services Committee for a term of three years.
Thank you, do I hear a second?
I'll check again.
Counsel Kenyon has seconded that, thank you. There's no other discussion, and I'll pause for a moment. Then I'll call for a vote. Jackie, will you do a vote, please?
Yes. Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Nay.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Okay, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Rob, for applying, and we look forward to you participating in our committees. Have a good evening.
Mayor, it's the CA, can I ask one thing of the council?
Absolutely.
So I reached out to all three of these folks to remind them they needed to be in attendance. And I was only able to leave Ms. Burnell a voicemail. So I would ask that if, for whatever reason, she doesn't show up tonight, I can bring her back at the next session.
I have no problem with that, does anybody on council have a problem with that?
I have a question, I thought we were going to hold off on O-DAC till we rework that committee a little bit.
She has applied for both O-DAC and Audit Committee.
No, RTMP.
RTMP.
My apologies, too many initials here, RTMP, yes. And O-DAC is still functioning, you know, and it has meetings that are being called. So whether or not we're.
It has had meetings, Kathy?
Has had meetings, but it has been posted for meetings, but there has not been a quorum, so they haven't been able to meet.
Yes, so it seems like a really good time for us to rework that committee since we don't have members on it.
We have a person who's applying to be a member, which would be the beginning of a.
Okay, well, I guess I'm just asking the discussion for the entire council that I think this would be a good time that we rework that committee because we haven't had meetings since October, maybe.
I disagree with you, I think we absolutely have to do that, but we do have an applicant. And we had a position posted, so I don't see that the two, that one precludes the other. I'm sorry, Counsel Hollitt, I'm sorry, Counsel Spleedoff, wait a moment, Counsel Hollitt, go ahead.
Did you want me to wait a minute? I'm sorry.
You, I'm sorry, I heard you start to speak and I had said his name, so please go ahead and finish, I'm sorry.
So my point is if we rework the committee and we make changes to the committee, that might affect somebody's membership to joining the group. And since we haven't had a meeting in, gosh, eight months, like almost eight months, it seems like the perfect time for us to be reworking that committee and to hold off on applications. And I mean, I apologize if I misunderstood, but I did actually think that we were holding off on applications for O-DAC. So my hopes would be that we rework that committee before we appoint people on there.
She's also applied to RTMP, so we will consider it for that one. And I'd love to hear from Counsel Spleedoff and Counsel Kenyon next.
Okay, I think that's what we did too, is put off O-DAC until we could redo it. I have no problem with the RTMP. Going ahead with that if she shows up tonight.
Or at another time, is what I think Brian was saying, was, you know, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and you're cutting out again, Kathy. I wanted to ask Counsel Hollitt. Counselor Hollitt, I know that we've revised the resolution for that committee is, but I also remember that we've talked about something being updated. But I just want to clarify, does it have to do with the resolution? Or I don't remember.
So what I remember was not the resolution, I think, I think that may have been completed. What I remember was it was the intent and purpose of O-DAC. We talked about O-DAC not being focused necessarily around property sales, but around other specific directions from the council and looking at other models from other cities and giving more direction on what we wanted O-DAC to do, what their focus should be.
Okay, yeah, and I think they actually have like an internal document about their focus, so maybe it's that that needs to be updated, huh?
Yes.
I would agree with that, go ahead and we should get on that, though, like right away, because that committee should be working, it would be nice.
Is that something that could be tasked for admin community, or excuse me, admin committee? Or are they already extended?
Well, I'm actually going to be in our committee updates, I'm going to be bringing that up. So we could be overwhelmed or we could be wide open, it's going to depend on later on. I don't care if it comes to admin, but I think that's a council decision. Kathy, you're muted now.
Try it again, there you go. Are you done?
Yes, thank you, go ahead.
Go ahead, Counsel Spleedoff.
Oh, no, I forgot to take my hand down.
Okay, so I think what we need to, you know, in my opinion here, we have an ordinance that we changed that we have functioning. If we indeed have decided that we wanted to actually suspend the committee, we should have suspended the committee. And I don't disagree that we need to rework it, you know, Counsel Hollitt, you and I have talked about this on many occasions, talking about economic development and how our committees, how our committee really could function in a better and a higher level. But right at this moment, we haven't suspended that committee. So let's, I hate for someone to walk away who is excited about economic development. I would love to make sure that when we share this information with her and her desire, that she knows that this isn't just going to go away and that we will reach out again to our citizens and hope that she applies to whatever it is that we rework.
Is it an option that we put her application on hold?
For RTMP, so I think we could do that. And I don't believe putting applications on hold is a good thing to do, it creates craziness as to who came in first. But I think if this council does not want the O-DAC committee to be in session, then it needs to actually suspend the committee meeting rather than just have it on the list of meetings and just not attending, not occurring, because they don't have a quorum, which is what is happening right now. A notice gets sent out and then a notice gets sent out saying we're not going to have it because there's no quorum.
We have suspended taking applications on other committees multiple times for XYZ reasons. I don't know why we're saying that we need to suspend the committee versus, you know, why do it different than we've done for other committees in the past? For instance, there was.
To be different, I just mean that we can suspend, suspend any applications. Because right now it appears to the community that we are taking applications for it, because it's empty.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I just want it to be clear, because then what that leads to is the appearance of nepotism, kind of? Like, oh, well, we're suspending it because maybe we don't like who's about to apply, or then we can change it. You know, so we have to be consistent with, you know, with what we're saying so that we just will not be taking any more applications for O-DAC until the council has revisited the purpose of the O-DAC committee. Does that make sense? Counsel Kenyon and Counsel Spleedoff, I see a hand again, is that a new hand?
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you, I actually do remember talking about, we actually had some applicants for this committee and Safety Committee, I think it was like a year ago, and, or maybe it was even more than that, because Counselor, what was her last name, Tricia? Tricia Maxfield, thank you, Counselor Maxfield, worked on the admin committee for updating all the resolutions before we opened that back up. So I think, I don't have it in front of me, but I think Counsel Hollitt might be right. Oh, however, sorry. I wanted to point out that considering, did I just hear tonight that we don't have anyone on that committee other than our counselor?
That's correct.
That is correct.
No, it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, go ahead, Brian.
Mr. Gobleman and Mr. Custer are both still on O-DAC.
Okay, so we just don't have quorum, it sounds like.
That's correct.
Mr. Custer's term didn't expire this December?
He was expired from Planning Commission.
But not O-DAC?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I might be wrong.
I can pull that up, but.
I would say that, you know, right now, rather than use the council time to wonder what we said and what we didn't, that perhaps we take the time over the next two weeks to dig up what we did say and what we did decide to make sure that we are moving forward in the decisions that we have made in the past. Because I agree, I have a, we did talk about this many times. We did pass a new resolution for O-DAC, we did talk about how we wanted to rework it. And so perhaps, or obviously, it's time to make sure that we put some meat behind that rather than just saying it needs to be done and not do it. So I would really like to consider just setting this aside for our next meeting and we can talk about it. And if our applicant applies, we will explain that we will take her application for the RTMP, but that we are postponing any applicants from O-DAC. Does that sound good?
I'm okay. Oops, yeah, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I was actually still speaking, I had not finished my thought when this came up. I'm going to go ahead and say, yeah, I'm okay with everything you just said, Kathy, but I've lost my train of thought for what I was talking about.
You'll probably get it back when we actually get into the O-DAC meet and talk about it at the next meeting. Counsel Spleedoff?
But I think or City Administrator has answered that there's two people on the board right now?
That's correct.
And could he do a verification for us?
All right, we'll ask for that.
Yes, because I want to make sure that, you know, we still have valid people on there.
That sounds good.
You know, before we do anything else, too.
All right, we'll put that on next week's agenda, then.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for the question. Okay, let's move on then. We are moving into nine point one, which is more about our volunteers, business from the city council. Brian, can you introduce this for us?
Yes, ma'am, it's CIS proposed volunteer forms. It was brought up last session and felt that there wasn't enough time to review the forms because they came in there about three days prior to the meeting. They were looking for a motion from the floor to adopt the template forms. The exhibits are the application, the basic application to become a volunteer, and then the waiver, which deals with the liability. So the issue is, is the city council requested to be provided these template forms recommended by CIS. Right now, there'd be no fiscal impact. Your options are to adopt the template forms for use and personalize for Oak Ridge or do not adopt the forms. And staff's recommending option one and the motions before you.
Thank you, Brian. And, okay, so just to remind everybody, we have the information from CIS. This is the forms that they have recommended and we asked Brian to get that. They recommend, this is a two-part application, one is just a volunteer application. And then once an applicant has been appointed, to then give them the volunteer registration and waiver form. So do you want to, because this may require or may end up with maybe some customization for the city itself, I'd like to just open this up for discussion first, rather than for a motion first. So council, let's move into a pre-discussion. No discussion? Okay, then let's move in. Audi, I see your hand. And Counsel Kenyon, did you have a question, are you looking for something?
I was looking for my notes, I do have comments on this, but I'm going to need a minute.
I was looking for my notes. I do have comments on this, but I'm gonna need a minute.
Go ahead. Counselor Splitoff, go ahead.
Okay. Now, from what I read, they fill out all these applications and then if they get this, then we have them fill out the other form, right?
That's correct.
Well, that's the way these are designed, so.
Yeah. Thank you, I'm done.
Counselor Whitney?
Um, so with the other forms we'll be handing people, we're going to also make sure they get the code of conduct or, I can't remember the title of the form that basically outlines conduct behavior, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Hall?
Um, I was just curious if Brian had any edits to this so far.
No, no, no specific words. You know, I would just obviously put the city logo on it and make it look nice.
Okay, I would say so far I really like it. Um, it seems really thorough. That's, that's all I can see so far.
Great. Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I just, I, for some reason can't find my notes on this one, but I, I do remember one thing I was curious about is it seems like there's, if Frank could scroll a little bit so I could see the form, I think there's a section about like, yeah, education, I don't know. I just remember when I was looking at it on my screen, I, I can't visualize it the way it's showing right here, but it seems like it's a huge document.
It is three, four pages long. The first two pages are the, uh, are the tables to fill in part. The third page is the agreement and signature, and the fourth page is what is required if it is a minor.
That helps. Oh, okay. Um, so the fourth page hopefully isn't something that's gonna get printed unless it's a minor. Or is this gonna be available for online?
Yeah, I would ask, uh, Amy, who does the conversions for us from the admin committee, to convert it to digital if she could.
Yeah. I guess that's really all I have. Or I, I, wait a minute, there was one more is, do we have, do we have a potential policy for this? Because you remember when we talked about this in another meeting, we talked about policies that would match. And do we have one?
She, she's still doing the reviews, the HR reviews. She's going over some documents I've sent her, the woman from CIS. And as part of those reviews, I believe she's, I think, probably recommend that we adopt a certain volunteer program in writing, but she's, like I said, she's probably not gonna get to it till by the tail end of summer.
Okay. Because I, I wanted to confirm whether this form would be for all volunteers or is it leaning towards specifically volunteers that are physical, working like in the parts department or?
No, this, this would be for all volunteers and it is you, obviously if it's a minor, then they get the extra sheet. Uh, if, if it's someone that's working in a library, they get the background check form. So the basic form will be consistent across all volunteers and then we'll add on if they need.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Counselor Hall, and then Counselor Whitney?
I'm sorry, I left my hand up.
Okay, Counselor Whitney?
Um, I just wanted to piggyback on Chrissy and say that I really like what I'm seeing as well. Um, I know that before we had a, I felt like it was a robust conversation about people's confidentiality with filling these out. And I just want to make sure that as these come to council that we're really being aware of that and making sure that we're keeping things out of the application that would be provided to the public that could be considered more confidential type of information about a person.
Um, as you noticed, I, I redacted much of the information, the personal information from these applications you saw today. And I would do the same if, if there was personal information, I would, I would redact.
Yeah, I, I figured that, but I just wanted to throw it out there because we did have what I feel like was a pretty robust conversation about that, so. That's just why I was mentioning it.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Counselor Kenyon, is that a new hand? Okay, yes, go ahead please.
Um, is there a part to this form that is for the agreement for a background check as well? I remember it talking about that being a separate, okay, there it is. So what would our process look like if someone applied for something that required this step? Would we ask for that after they've been appointed or before?
My intent, CA, my intent would be after they're appointed, so we wouldn't want them to have to fill it out for no reason. So we would do it after they've been appointed and it would come fill it out and I, or, and, and I would hand it to the, to Michael to do the check.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I was wondering, how would we be deciding, how would the city be deciding whether or not something that might come up in a background check would prevent them from being on the committee? Is there a recommendation from our insurance company?
I'm sure there isn't a volunteer program, but I don't, uh, I don't have it yet. So, or I do have it, I just haven't read through it enough to answer that particular question. I'll look through it and see what, with.
So in the interim, if we, if we accept this application tonight without policies, how are we gonna handle it in the interim before we have?
I guess, I guess I'd ask for some trust to be able to apply some, uh, some consideration after looking at the background check and, and using uh, comparable situations where you wouldn't want someone, whether, you know, depending on what the, uh, the, the reason for the pop on the background check is, if it's a crime of sexual assault, then obviously you don't want them working in a library.
I'm gonna interject here just because I think we have as a council talked about this and, and while we, I don't think like we moved into the policy that is gonna be so important like Counselor Kenyon suggested that we do once we know what direction we're gonna go in, was that the background check is specifically just for library, anyone working with children. And if for, if for some reason we had like a youth program, a youth volunteer program with an adult overseeing, that definitely would be there. So where it impacts or has contact with children, a volunteer background check is absolutely going to be required. I personally do not see why we need to have a background check for any other reason. I don't, I don't see any reason why a volunteer, uh, why a background check is necessary to serve on a volunteer committee of the city council. But, you know, that's something I think we've kind of talked about and it really does lead to what, what you said, Counselor Kenyon, that we need to develop, once we see what CIS's program is, a policy of our own for how we use these forms. And Counselor Kenyon, I, my guess is you probably won't respond to that. So go ahead and then Counselor Splitoff.
Um, yes, I actually would like to know, uh, you know, never mind, go ahead with Counselor Splitoff.
Counselor Splitoff, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the kind of thing is, is if we, we have to have a policy out there or ordinance. Because if you take and put this form out here and we adopt this form and we don't have a policy there that says, oh, well, it's only with person that works with kids. If that's not written, then we are denying somebody else out there for, uh, bad reason. And if it, if we have a policy that states this, or ordinance that states this, whatever you want to call it, that it's strictly for the library and persons that'd be working with children, minors. And if we don't do that and we make somebody fill it out for the library and we don't, don't make somebody fill it out for anything else, then that person can come back against the city on that. And that's what I'd like to see is, is it's, it's done first. We have all the eggs in a basket first because if we don't, it could be a big liability to the city.
So I agree with what you're saying, Audi, but I, there's two, two things there and I'm not trying to rebut what you're saying at all. But we have, we have a legal responsibility to, um, to screen for anyone working with children. So that kind of goes up almost above and beyond, um, as a city. Um, that goes kind of above and beyond just what council would decide for policy, although it will get rolled into the, um, into our policy, I'm sure, absolutely. But I would remind, I mean, council asked to see these forms. Council asked us to, asked to, to have CIS look at how we do this. They haven't been able to come back in its entirety yet because they are, they are backed up. Um, and so this is a piece of that. If you would not, if the council decides they don't want to change the forms until we can do the policy too, or if they decide to put this on hold, work on a policy, we still have volunteer forms that we are using, which your questions, I, and good questions, um, still apply to. So, you know, let's, uh, if, if we don't want to, to look at the forms and although we like them, what we see, but we're not really just making a motion on them, that's fine. Um, we can hold off, but we still have forms that we're using already and we need to create a policy on how to use them. So if you want to not look at the forms, we could do that too. So, you know. Uh, Counselor Kenyon?
Well, I wasn't done.
I'm sorry, I thought you were. You looked, you, I thought you gave me a thumbs up. Go ahead.
Could we add in that if you're into these forms, if you're going to be dealing with the children as in the library or volunteer services, that you would have to have a background check?
Certainly add that into the motion as, as we move to, if we move to approve these forms, it can, it, it can definitely be included, um, so that, that covers that, um, basic thing. And, and it would be done anyway. And that's kind of what I'm saying is the city is required to do that no matter what. Uh, if it's with children to cover our, to cover our liability and for common sense.
So CA, if I might, real quick, just draw your attention to what I have on the screen here. It's, it basically says, understand that you might be subject to a background check and, um, you'll be contacted again if it's going to be that way. And it's pretty clear there that every volunteer if approached is, is saying that, yes, I understand that I could be approached for a background check and that, uh, you can turn it down at that point if you're not interested.
On page three is what that is that is showing there. Does that help? Counselor Splitoff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm rea-, I'm reading it right up here. And the, so if we get somebody in here and they fill this out and they come to us as council to be appointed, is the background check done after we say they're appointed?
That's correct. It's after.
So then we would have to go back in if something was bad in their application, their background, then we as a council would have to come back in and take them out of there or, or what?
It says right, I think it says right here that they can, if it doesn't, in the background check. Hang on. Yes, he would be taken out, but, uh, you are correct.
So this is just informing people that they, there, a background check may be, may be done, may be required or because of a position or whatever. So by saying yes, then you're saying, yes, I would agree to a background check. And, um, and then, and then one of, if a background check was deemed necessary because of the, the type of position it was and say, say something alarming came up, that would be brought to the attention of the CA. The CA in executive session would then inform the council that he is asking for this applicant to be denied or to be removed. Not in public session, ever. So, um, you know, that's, it would be afforded the, the same protections that we would, we would want of ourselves, you know, if something was awry. And then move forward. Yeah.
I would like, I'd like to see, you know, uh, if they're applying for the library or some, something that's going to do with minors, that a background check is done before it comes to the council. That way council wouldn't be wasting its time saying, yes, we approve you and then background comes back and it's not good and then we have to go into executive session and deal with it. So that would be my preference on, on the thing is, is if it has to do with the library board or anything doing with minors that, uh, before the application is submitted to council, that it is, a proper background check is done first. They're vetted before they put their, yeah. And that only makes sense in the whole thing, instead of wasting council's time of going back and forth. And the, the participants, uh, applicant.
So, um, I see several hands up here. Chief Martin is one of them. I'm gonna go to Chief Martin and then to Counselor Whitney and then Counselor Hall, and then Counselor Kenyon. So Chief Martin, go ahead.
I was just gonna make a statement to clear things up. I'm, I, I'll do the research, but I'm 99% positive. We could not give background checks to people until they were offered a volunteer job. So we could not do it before legally. E- even for us in law enforcement, somebody has to be given a job offer before we can do a background check. So, uh, we can do a very initial one on law enforcement, but a full, we have to have their permission and it's after they've been offered a job or a volunteer position. And for, I believe CIS has told us before, for civilian positions, they have to be offered a job or a volunteer position before a background check can be done.
Thank you for that clarity. I appreciate that. Counselor Whitney?
Um, I was actually going to say exactly what Kevin just said because I know that with the state or government jobs, you get offered the job position. And even if you've been there for 17 or 20 years, you still get a new background check when you get offered a new job and it doesn't happen until you're, after you're offered the job. And then I think another, um, piece to consider is that background checks cost money. Um, so there may came, come a time where we have to pay for these and sometimes they're not cheap. So I think that's another important piece, um, to look at. And, and I think individuals that are applying for positions, they usually know if they're going to pass or not, you know, so, um, if, personally, if, if they've applied and they know they're not going to pass and they know it's a volunteer position where they need to have a background check, then really that's, that's kind of on them to kind of have it going back and forth and, and I think it just helps us with our due diligence and making sure we're doing things right. And I totally understand what Audi was talking about with vetting people first. I completely understand that. And, and I value that opinion too, as well.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Counselor Hall, go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, I also understand where Audi's gone with it. I think it's important. Um, I would be of the opinion, I would- I would be of the opinion, I would prefer that we have it on our application, stating pending background investigation. So, we are approving you as a committee member pending background approval. And then from there, Brian does the background. And I really don't think it needs to come back to council. I think if we have a set of criteria, Brian can make that decision. If there's a red flag for a sex offender, I just, I don't think he needs to come back to us. I think that's something he can just let us know, you know. Counsel, I'm sorry, this person didn't pass background check. Simple as that. My next thing I did want to bring up is, I do feel like there might be some more committees than just the library that could use the same background. I mean, we've talked about using high school interns on ODAC for one, and we've talked about getting high schoolers involved. I also know that in the past, we had issues holding budget committee meetings at the high school because one of our committee members, and that was kind of a big deal. We really needed to use the high school, and we weren't able to use it for quite a while until the town hall meeting. So, gosh, I just feel like that background check could be utilized on more than just the library committee. That's all I have.
Okay. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you. So, I was going to also bring that same stuff up that Counselor Hollitt was just talking about because I don't think any decisions have been made by this council as to when, or where, or how we're going to use the background check. So, I was uncomfortable with the statements that our mayor was making earlier as if these things have been decided, because I don't think they have. I also want to know why we would even be checking for criminal history, employment history, and some of the other things that were listed on the page before, if we're not going to be using that information to base our decision as to whether they can volunteer or not. Also have a question for the chief. Is, is it possible to run a check solely for whether or not someone has a... I don't know the appropriate term, the predator, or that they have to file for... Can't think of the term. But, you know, a sexual assault-type charge in their background. Sex offender, thank you. Is there a way to check for just that?
There probably is for the, the level one predatory sex offenders. They're usually posted, but if they're not that, no. And we have to have a reason to do a criminal history, so we'd have to have a valid purpose. And I'll have to confirm with Michael. I believe with library people, we can do it. But I'll check with Michael. There's, I think if it's not library people, we couldn't, we'd have to pay for those. There's certain ones that Sergeant McPherson can do through our resources, and there's other ones that we would have to pay Oregon State Police for. So, I can't speak to which ones which, for sure. I know there's something to do with library, and I can get back to the council on that from Sergeant McPherson.
Thank you. I really feel like we should probably postpone this decision until we are prepared to make a policy on following it. I know we don't even have any policies now for the current one, so. I'm, I don't know where I'm at with it. I just, I wish we had a policy. That's all I have.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should have some type of policy out here to follow up on something. It's, you know, so I think we should postpone this. I mean, as much as we need it right now. But you said we have forms right now that we have been using, that we can use. But before we get into it, really, I think we should have a policy out for it. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Kenyon, you have a hand up. And Hollitt also, are you? Got a new hand? Old hand? There you go. Okay, well, from, I have not heard from all of the council in this discussion. But, you know, it is certainly the council's option to table this either until, till a specific time to bring it back up again. It is also council's prerogative to table it to a specific time, and then also indicate that we want to, because it sounds like this is the direction you all may be thinking, go, we want to begin work on a policy. And we know that CIS probably, more than likely, will have a volunteer program, which would probably be helpful when creating our policy. That doesn't mean that, you know, we can't pursue that on our own and move forward with that too. So, with that, I would ask what council would like to do. Counselor Kenyon, I see your hand. And then Counselor Whitney. You're muted. There you go.
Sorry, I wanted to just point out, I think when we table something, we are supposed to bring it back up at the next meeting?
To a specific time, or the next meeting, as long as you put a time on it.
Oh, okay. I would like to, we table this until we have a policy suggestion from our insurance carrier. And I think that in the meantime, the council should be working on what we'd like to see.
Motion to table this until we have the, the policy documents, or the program documents from CIS?
And the council work on a list of what we'd like to see in the policy between now and then.
So... Before, before you second it, we have, we have two, two different pieces here. So we have a piece to table this, this specific thing about our forms, until we get the policy manual from CIS. And then, I think we have a second motion, right? Then we have a second motion to, to direct council to begin working on policies for volunteer process, for acceptance of volunteers, and the process by which we do it, because they go hand in hand. So, Counselor Kenyon, can we split those two? So, we have...
Yeah, but that wasn't the motion that I made. I would like to, I would like to just, right now, focus on the first motion that I think you wrote down, which is to table this until CIS has a proposal for policies. That'll be my motion, a proposal, table until there's a proposal for policies.
Got it.
Mayor, one, one comment from the CA?
Yes, sir.
There, there already exists a CIS template for the volunteer program.
Okay. Is it more than what we have in front of us?
I thought you said August.
That's when the results of this HR review will be given to the city. There is a template that she sent me some time ago when this first came up of a volunteer program.
I would like to redact my motion and make a new motion.
I would accept your reduction and listen for your new motion. Go for it.
I move that we table this until the council has had an opportunity to develop, to review the proposal and develop our own policy. Review the template. Sorry, can you change it to the template?
Okay, so move that we table this template form acceptance until we have a chance to, until council has reviewed the CIS policy, volunteer policy. Is that right? Counselor Kenyon?
Sorry, I'm not sure that that is...
Okay, so you want to move, I'll say what I say, interrupt me and change it. Move that we table...
I can't work like that. Can I just make my motion?
Yes, go ahead. I've got my pencil going. Do it again.
I move that we table this discussion until the council has developed a policy to go with it.
Do you want to say a volunteer policy?
Yes, a volunteer policy to go with it.
And is it okay if we say with the templates? Forms, rather than it?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, so Dawn has moved that we table this discussion until the council has developed a volunteer policy to go with it.
The form, this form, this volunteer form.
Got it. Audie? Yes. Okay. Now, discussion. Counselor Hollitt, I see your hand. Counselor Whitney, I see your hand. Go ahead, Counselor Hollitt.
My comments have changed.
No worries.
My only thing is that I just, since we're tabling this, I don't want, I just want to make sure that it's on the priority table, because we did ask Brian to push this through. It was a priority for us, and he got that done, and I really appreciate that. And I just hope we all remember that, I think the original date was like late August, and so he got it to us in May. So, just so that everybody knows, we don't push it off too far. And then I think policy isn't obvious. We need to have. I was kind of curious at first if policy, if that's something we wanted admin to give, but now I think I've changed my opinion that we should go with what Brian was saying. So, through that discussion, my comments changed, but...
That's why we have discussion. That's a good thing. Counselor Whitney?
So if I'm understanding this right, based on the motion, my feeling is that we wouldn't really be able to develop something until after we get the review back from CIS as well. And that's months away, right? Because if we're going to develop a policy, aren't we going to want to be looking at the review that CIS is doing along with the template that they'll be providing, and the forms that we're looking at here? So, so really, that is quite a ways out, because it feels like if we're going to do a review and develop a policy, we want it to be as thorough as possible, and, and know what CIS finds from what we've given them to look at and review as well. So, is, do you, I feel like I'm on track with that? Is that everybody else's understanding?
This is CA. I have a policy template. And since we don't have any policy at all, the only thing that CIS was probably going to recommend was establish a policy. So I think the council can move forward using the template and see what they agree with and what they don't agree with, and come up with a tailored policy for Oak Ridge.
Okay, okay. That works. Thank you.
Counselor Hollitt? Counselor Kenyon? Are those, okay, Counselor Hollitt? You vanished too. Counselor Whitney? Goodness gracious, vanishing yellow hands. Counselor Spleedoff?
Okay. I'd like to ask a question of the administrator. You said you received this template a couple months ago. I'd like to know why it wasn't brought to council's attention then, instead of having to wait now again?
Because the discussion was about forms, counselor, not about the program.
Okay, well, it seems like they go hand, it seems like they go hand in hand. And that, because now we're asking to see the template. Now we're going to have to wait for another meeting to see the template, and it could have come out all at the same time.
Counselor, we're asking about forms and the product, background check, and the waiver of liability.
I think we should table it.
I want to call for the question.
Thank you. Okay, please, the motion before you is to table the discussion until the council has developed a volunteer policy to go with the volunteer forms. We've had it seconded. Jackie, please call for a vote.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
I don't know what that is, but it's horrible.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holster, Holston? Counselor Coker?
Aye. Thank you.
Mayor, one, mayor, could I have one clarification question?
Absolutely.
So you've chosen to hold off on this form without a accompanying policy to go with it. As you mentioned, we currently have a form with no accompanying policy. So am I to stop taking all volunteer forms, or should I use the existing form and allow people still to apply?
Counsel, that's a question that the CA is, is absolutely within his rights to ask. Is the council, through this discussion, asking us not to take any more volunteer forms in because we don't have a policy? Or is the council asking us to continue with the method that we've been doing without a formal written policy? Counselor Coker?
My opinion is Brian should just go ahead and continue with the current paper since this one is not being accepted.
Thank you. Counselor Kenyon?
My opinion is that we should suspend taking all applications until this is sorted out.
Okay. Counselor Spleedoff?
I do too, because it's almost...
You're cutting out. Try it again, Audie. You were cutting out.
I think somebody else is on here that's getting some bad noise. Anyway, I think that we should hold off on it.
We need to give our CA direction. Counselor Hollitt, I see your hand. Counselor Whitney, see your hand. Counselor Hollitt, go first.
I don't like to say it, but I do happen to agree that I think we should suspend. Brian has a really good point, that if we're going to require a policy for one application, then it makes no sense that we're not going to require the policy. It doesn't make sense that we're not going to require the policy for another application. It's kind of contradicting ourselves. And also, the whole reason that this came up was that we had somebody apply for a position, and, you know, the liability thing came into play. So, I don't really like it, but I do think that we need to suspend. But like I said earlier, we really need to put this on the front burner as a priority to get it done next meeting. That's all I have.
Kathy, you're muted.
I'm sorry, Counsel Whitney, the, the train was going by, so I muted myself. Counsel Whitney, go ahead.
That's okay. You know, we've been operating without a policy for a long time. Um, I, I understand what people are saying. But I really worry that if we suspend taking applications, a lot of things, it's really hard to, for us, it seems like it's hard for us to get some things done sometimes. And I really hate to see us stop forward momentum with getting applicants applying for vacancies. I just feel like it's my, my feeling is that it just stops us from moving forward. And, and I do acknowledge and I do understand what people are saying, that we've been doing it this way for a long time. Um, yes, we had a question regarding liability that came forward, but I don't see any reason to stop taking applications. I think it just stops the forward momentum that we've had. And any interest that anybody may have in applying for any of the vacancies. And as we, and I think we're going to keep, you know, as we move out of COVID, I think maybe more people will want to apply and more people will want to volunteer as summer comes into play, you know, if we have a new disc golf course and you know, people are going to be out and about more, so there might be more interest. So I just really worry about stopping forward momentum. And if we can get it done right away, great, but I mean, if it's only a couple of weeks from now, why stop taking applications for a couple of weeks or why not? But I, I just, I hate to stop forward momentum and, and I feel like stopping taking those applications would do that.
Hollitt, I see a hand. Is that a new hand or an old hand?
Sorry.
No worries. Okay, so I, I, here's my opinion on this. I think we put ourselves in liability if you go ahead and suspend because you already, you are, you are indicating in a way that, that would, there may be some issues with our current volunteer forms and our current volunteer process. Um, and that leaves you open to to litigation should somebody get hurt. Um, and then can point to the fact that we have suspended this because we thought it was, wasn't any good. So my concern is that we go ahead and put this on next week, next week's no, two-week agenda. So, and I lost the date again, so if someone would pull, oh, the 20th. If we put this on the May 20th agenda, with the intention of for council to, in the meantime, go over the CIS volunteer template that RCA is going to provide us and come prepared to put together a policy or adopt the policy that we're going to be presented with along with these forms. If that is not something that this council believes that they can do quickly, that they can actually do by the 20th, then I would like to have a date when it would happen. I do not think it's wise to suspend taking applications. I just think that sets you up for, for, and I'm not an attorney, but everything in me says that's probably not a really good idea to do. So I would, I am more than happy to put this on the two weeks' agenda with the council's commitment that they are going to go over the, over the CIS volunteer templates and these forms and come prepared to make, make some decisions. So that's my opinion. Counsel Bjornson, I see your hand.
Yeah, I think that we should definitely put this on the May 20th agenda. I think we're perfectly capable of getting something put together by then. If Brian gets it out to us, we can always email questions and things in the meantime. And if we commit to doing that on the 20th, I don't see any reason to suspend taking applications, so this is obviously really important and I think we should focus on getting it done ASAP.
You're muted. I'm muted there, I am. Yeah, I know, Trudy, this has been a rough night. Um, the, how is, how are we all feeling about that? If we put it on the 20th? Are we all okay with that? Yeah, thumbs up? Everybody? Yes? Okay, that's what we're going to do. Brian? So, and in the meantime, we're not going to suspend volun, we're going to suspend or not suspend for the next two weeks.
Not suspend.
Not suspend. Okay, Melissa, I see a thumb too. Good. Brian, we're not going to suspend taking forms. We will put this on the 20th agenda. And if you will get out that volunteer template to everybody, council will begin doing their studying.
Will do.
Thank you. Okay, where were we? So, volunteer forms. We're in 10. Business from the city administrator, ODOT rest area construction contract termination. Brian?
Okay, this is, uh, an ODOT terminating an agreement that was made, I think way back in 1991 to construct the rest area. Had amendment to increase the price for the construction. And this is to actually put it to bed. It's been a while and I probably cleaned up their paperwork in, at ODOT, but this is a termination agreement, but it's also accompanied, uh, as you will see on the next agenda item, with a maintenance agreement, which they've agreed to pay up to $20,000 each year to, or $10,000 each year to help us maintain the the rest area. So, um, it needs council approval because it's the mayor's signature on this and we're recommending that, staff recommends you approve the termination agreement in the, in the motions before you.
First item in 10.1, can I have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the amendment number two to contract number 10194, terminating the agreement.
This is Counselor Coker. I second.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Counsel Kenyon.
Sorry, I couldn't get to my hands.
It's okay.
Um, my question is it says in here that we would be required to provide workman's comp and safe. And I wanted to find out if we've been doing that in the past.
Workman, for whom?
That was my question, for whom?
Um, for anybody working at the
Are you, you may be mixing it up with the next contract, which talks a little bit about that with the volunteer, with the people to maintain.
Sorry, I might be, what is this one?
This is the termination of the old contract that they used to construct the rest area.
Thank you.
No problem. Counselors, I saw another hand up there. Okay. See? I did see it. Okay. If there's no further discussion, Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Okay, that's all.
Counsel, so we have helped ODOT put this, clean their files and put that to bed. Now let's move to 10.2. Brian, go ahead.
Right, this is the maintenance agreement and the agreement was attached. So again, this, this just, agreement just lays out the expectations between IGA, between ODOT and the city. And as I mentioned, ODOT has agreed to pay an annual lump sum of $10,000 to maintain and operate the Green Waters Rest Area. That number can be revisited. I, I asked them, I said, well, what happens if the costs go up? And they go, it's, you can revisit that figure annually with ODOT, should we need a greater cost share? And as Counsel Kenyon mentioned, I had the same question about the workman's comp. And so I asked Matt Dalstrom and he said it's just a CYA that ODOT puts in there so they don't get stuck with workman's comp for people that the city hires to clean the rest area or work on the rest area. They just want to ensure that the city's covering that. And we're recommending to approve this. And the motion's before you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Um, okay, I move to approve agreement number 33960 with Oregon Department of Transportation for the operation and maintenance of Green Waters Rest Area.
That was Counsel Whitney. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, Dawn.
Thank you, Counsel Kenyon. And it's open for discussion. Counsel Kenyon, I see your hand. I also see Counsel Whitney's hand. So Counsel Kenyon, go first, please.
Thank you. So I would like to confirm if we are providing workman's comp for anyone who works at the rest area. And then I also have I'm wondering, um, this obviously, we have an old contract. I know we haven't been receiving the funds for it for a lot of years. Is it possible that we can ask for those funds for the, for the years we haven't received them? Brian?
I know that came up in discussion with the ODOT rep, Franny. And I, I don't think we've gotten an answer back from her yet. She, I think, if I remember the meeting with her correctly, I think she didn't expect retroactive. But this will definitely formalize the contribution, so going forward. But I'll ask the question again of Franny to, and see if you can get a formal response.
Okay, well, the reason I brought it up is because it's in, in this contract, it looks pretty clear. That's why I was hoping to see the prior contract. To find out if, you know, if it was established.
Well, maybe the problem is there never was a prior contract.
They actually referenced the contract number in this amendment, so I believe there should be. Are they called this amendment?
No, the previous one was amendment two, terminated. As far as I know, this if it was, if this was a change to it, it'd be an amendment to the original contract and this is not a change. This is the original contract.
Right, what I'm seeing is the the previous one referred to amendment two, which means there was a contract. So I'd like to find out if the contract stated that they would be paying us and find out why they haven't. I actually have heard this over the years. So I'd like to find out if it's true.
My point is, is that the contract that had the amendment was the contract that provided for the construction of the rest area, not for the maintenance of the rest area. This con, this contract, and that's actually, they reference that construction contract in the maintenance contract, paragraph three. So the fact that if there was a
Just give us the contract.
There is no other contract, counsel. This is it.
Okay, then I'd like to see the original contract.
I sent it to you already, counselor.
I thought you sent me an email that said that you didn't know we had one.
No, I believe, I sent it to all counselors, the original contract for the construction of the Green Waters Rest Area. And amendment one, which was a change in the price of the Green Waters Rest Area.
That is true. I have that, Brian.
Oh, okay, I did not see the update. I only saw the one that says. I have no idea where it is.
Okay, so that is out there. Do you have any other questions, Counsel Kenyon?
Um, no, I'm going to review this.
Thank you, Counsel Whitney, go ahead. And then Counsel Coker.
Um, so was there a way to address the $10,000? Because it doesn't feel like that's even close to enough money for the maintenance. I mean, why was only $10,000 offered? Do we know?
No, I, it's about a 50% thing. I asked Robert what it cost us each year to maintain the Green Waters Rest Area. Because apparently it runs about $15,000. Because I was, I was concerned about the cost share. So, right now, it meets, it meets the requirement.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counsel Coker and then Counsel Spleedoff.
So Brian, just to clarify, ODOT would be paying the city of Oak Ridge $10,000 per fiscal year to maintain the rest area? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly.
Yes, ma'am. It would be to help us maintain the rest area, their, their cost share of that.
Okay, thank you.
Spleedoff, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to find out, is it, are grounds through, through Robert that's doing it, or is it the person out at Green Waters Park who's taking care of it?
It's a team effort. Robert obviously is doing the landscaping, the, if a tree has to be taken out, that plumbing, if there's a problem with the plumbing or something like that. April Allen is our caretaker on that side. And she does the cleaning in return for a zero rent at the house.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, so we don't have to cover her through insurance or anything in case something happens?
She wouldn't be covered by workman's comp if, if something happened to her. I'm thinking, I'll have to check with the insurance agent. I'm pretty sure she's covered by health insurance or accident insurance if she had to go be hospitalized.
Is it, is that, does that become a liability to the city then that?
He's covered!
It's, it's just a, it's, as we do with all employees of the city, we, we offer them insurance if they get hurt on the job.
Thank you.
Whitney, I see your hand.
Sorry, that's an old hand.
Counsel Kenyon, is that an old hand?
No, it's new.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'd like a couple of things. I'd like to clarify, like a yes or no answer. Are we going to be providing workman's comp for our worker at Green Waters Park?
Yes!
We are going to be
Who is that?
Excuse me, just a minute, Counsel Kenyon. I, I just want to, who is on the screen as iPhone two? Please mute yourself or get off of the council. Thank you. Counsel Kenyon, please continue.
Thank you. I'm actually was waiting for the answer from Brian. Are we going to provide workman's comp according to this contract or not?
The city will provide workman's comp for city employees that operate the rest area.
But not for the caretaker?
I need to check with the insurance agent whether we are providing her workman's comp for most of like-type people, we don't. It's just if, if they get, do get injured on the job, they would be covered by the hospital, but they just would not be eligible for workman's comp afterwards. But I will check and give you an answer next session.
Okay, and then secondly, I'd like to know if you could provide me with the information for the contact at ODOT. Uh, and I'd also like to make a statement that it has been in our budget to receive money for this very reason, $10,000 for years. And there is old budgets on file that show that we were receiving it for a period of time, so I believe there would be a contract. And then it stopped. So I'd like the contact information for someone at ODOT so that I can find the contract myself.
I prefer that you did not direct, ODOT directly contact them directly. I will ask them if there is a contract. If there's any other contract that talks about the maintenance of the Green Waters Rest Area, if that's acceptable.
I think it is, that's Thank you. Brian, I think I would, would also like to know, because Counsel Kenyon is, is correct in that I remember this discussion when I was a counselor and talking to Counselor Counselor to, to the CA and to and to our planning director or assistant planning director, Rick Silstra, about this. And we actually talked to ODOT about this and they, in a conversation about, when we were talking about the MBA funds and why we hadn't been being paid. And it was my, it was my understanding that we did get paid. So could you go back and find out when the last time we got that 10K was? And at that, yeah, and at that time, the conversation that we had with Franny was that, yes, they could do the back pay. Now, if they've changed their mind on that, and I, I would like some really good assurance that if we sign this contract, that they will actually and I, I would like some really good assurance that if we sign this contract, that they will actually pay.
I was at that meeting with you, Kathy. I remember that.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't imagining it.
I remember talking, I remember learning of that through, from Franny.
Yeah. So, so there you go, marching orders. Will you find out for us, you know, when the last time we received the 10K was, and what their intention is to, to take care of the back pay, and-
Copy of the contract?
Alan, a copy. If there is a contract in existence that, that talked about the maintenance between us, then, then I'd like to see that too. If there isn't, then we just go with what we have, but, but, okay, so now-
Yes, I will do that. And Eric tells me that we do pay workman's comp for April Allen.
Thank you. That actually makes me breathe better. Good, good, good. Okay, so we have before us a motion, and we're in discussion. So are we ready to move on? Oh, Audi, I see your hand.
Uh, I just wanted to ask one thing. Now, if we pay workers' comp for April Allen at the, down there, is she considered as an employee? And do we pay, are we obligated to pay, uh, social security on that, or what?
Eric, you want to explain the payroll question, please?
April's not an employee of the city. All we do is pay, she gets the free rent for doing the work, and we pay workman's comp. Just so council knows, you all get paid workman's comp for your volunteer hours, and same for all the people that volunteer at the library.
So if I fall out of my chair, I can get workman's-
I cannot answer that question.
I'm just kidding.
Just make sure it's on camera, Dawn.
Yeah. Don't, don't take yourself on video.
Eric, isn't that also true for both fire and police volunteers?
You're absolutely right. It's for all the fire department volunteers and the, the police volunteers as well.
Eric?
Thank you.
Okay, so I am going to call for a vote on the motion. The motion was, I move to approve the agreement, uh, hold on, yes, agreement number 33960 with Oregon Department of Transportation for the operation and maintenance of the Green Waters Rest Area. Was made by Counselor Whitney, seconded by Counselor Kenyon. Jackie, please call for a vote.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Hollit?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Okay.
I lost my agenda, guys. Oh, there it is. Let's move on to the next, IFA study extension, Brian, 10.3.
Okay, this is a IFA-funded contract to look at I&amp;I issues with our wastewater system and stormwater system. 10.3, the amendments on number two is the exhibit. Looking for a motion from the floor to approve to sign the extension. It's to extend the current project completion date to 1 September 2021. Recommended approval and the motions before you.
Kathy, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? No? Okay. Can I have a motion, please? No, can you not hear me?
I can hear you. I move to approve amendment to contract B18007A-02.
I second.
Call it seconds that. Is there any discussion? Okay, with no, yes. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
I would just quickly like to understand, um, I was under the impression this project was completed a long time ago, so if it's still midway and it needs to be extended, could you please give us a brief on the status of what the project is and where we're at with it?
The study that looked at the wastewater and stormwater systems and the infiltration and into the systems, which causes us to process more water than we should. In the wastewater system, it was done by the city engineer or being done by the city engineer. And he said he needed a few more months to finish it, even though I do have a binder in my office, but I don't know, maybe there's some additional things. And it also would allow the city to recover any additional expenses if there were any. So that's all I know.
Um, could you clarify for me if this is the same study that's been being worked on for about four or five years?
Yes.
And about two years ago, I asked Rick Zilstra, and he said it was still happening, work being worked on.
Yeah, this is the, I'm sorry. This is a 2017 study.
So four years.
Right, and it, it, it actually, they're asking for this extension because it's either just it lapsed or getting ready to lapse.
The grant's getting ready to lapse, so the-
The contract with IFA, right, the grant.
Okay. I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Counselor Spleedoff, I see your hand.
Yeah. Can I ask the reason why it's taking so long? I mean, the four-year study? I mean,
I don't have a good answer for you, I'm sorry.
Okay, how long can, how long do we expect to have this drawn out? How many more years?
No, they, they've changed the completion deadline from seven, seven February 2021 to one September 2021, so this summer, at the end of this.
Okay.
So, so questions that we have, that I have of the engineer is, having taken so long, how, how accurate will the first things that were analyzed be? And you have no answer to that. I know you don't. But that is definitely a question that we will be asking when the report actually does hit us, as to whether or not is, it is still viable for what they did at the beginning? Or do they have to do it, look up another one and go round robin? But that's a question for when the report comes in, not for whether we want to extend this or not. Counselor Kenyon, Counselor Spleedoff, your hand's still up.
Yeah, I did have a new question. I wondered if we have any confirmation from our engineer that he will be done before the end of this, before this deadline.
Yeah, he's, he initially responded to IFA asking for the extension, and they are the ones that are asking us, IFA's asking us to extend. So yes, he has been involved in this conversation.
Thank you.
Jackie, call for a vote, please.
Counselor Coker? Counselor Hollit?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Mayor Holston? Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, we are getting down on time. It's 8:51. We are going to move to number 13, the supplemental budget.
Mayor, would it be possible to do the city auditor first?
Yes, we can, we can do that if you want to. I just wanted to make sure we got the supplemental budget in. So we will be going over nine o'clock, because we need to get these two things in. Let's do the audit first, 11.1.
The city auditor review and decision. This is a motion from the floor, looking for approval. The auditor proposal was provided as the exhibit. We requested a request for qualification from city auditor, and we received one response, even though we solicited many more. And the proposal was provided to the Audit Committee for Review and Recommendation this week. The fiscal impact is, the charge for the, for the audit is an annual charge of 25K, and it could be add-ons if a single audit's required. Your options are appoint Polly Rogers and Company as a city auditor, or do not appoint them as a city auditor. We're recommending number one, and the motions before you.
Thank you. And I think what I'd like to do at this point is add on to what Brian just said. Counselor Kenyon, and do you want to speak to what the Audit Committee talked about? And, uh, the questions that we brought up to inform council?
Um, not really. I didn't prepare for that. I assumed that you were going to be doing that.
Okay. So the Audit Committee did, did convene last Thursday?
Monday.
Jeez. Long week. On Monday. And, and we did look at this. We were informed of what Brian just told you, as far as, we, we questioned how many requests were received, how we advertised for it. And it was a, it was a broad, broad sweep. Eric shared that he reached out personally to three firms that he is familiar with this firm. This is the only one that actually responded. He had three initial responses. He responded to the two that he didn't receive anything from, who kind of indicated they might want to, and they, they declined to put in a proposal. We also discussed the fact that we have had this auditor before, and that at some point, Counsel, Counselor Kenyon, do you remember the year?
2017.
Thank you. In 2017, we switched to another auditor. We questioned why. Counselor Kenyon went through the back minutes and could not find at any point where the council directed staff to change auditors. So, you know, that satisfied somewhat our, our concern about, well, why did we switch? And while we did not vote, because we had some questions that got answered after Counselor Kenyon made her search, we didn't find any other reasons to not recommend this to the council for approval. So there we are now. So I will ask for a motion so that we can answer any questions.
I make a motion to appoint Polly Rogers and Company as the city auditor for the fiscal years ending June 30th, 2021, 2022, and 2023.
This is Counselor Coker. I second.
You. Is there any discussion? Okay, with no discussion, Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Mayor Holston? Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Hollit?
Aye.
Okay.
Brian, let's move on to the next one. And I've lost my-
Hey, this is 13.1, and that's the resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020-21, making appropriations. The resolution 04-2021, if adopted. We're looking for a motion to approve the proposed resolution. It, the, the issues there, you can read it, but your options are with, with regards to the council rules of procedure, you can direct a public hearing on the resolution be held, pass the resolution to a second reading, reject the resolution in whole or in part, adopt the resolution in whole or in part. And we're recommending that we, adoption of the resolution, and the motions before you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Kathy, I don't have a motion, but I wanted to make a statement. So I spoke to my brother tonight and asked him more about any work that he's doing for the city. He said he has not received any money from the city, which was, which would make something a conflict, but that he may. So I'd like to, um, make a potential conflict of interest, because he hasn't received money, and he, but he may. So I feel like that's more of a potential conflict of interest for me with my brother Rick Zilstra.
Thank you for that. While we're on that, or is there anyone else who would like to declare a conflict? Hearing none?
No, this is Counselor Bjornson. I just, to be safe, would like to declare a potential conflict, because I'm on the Volunteer Restaurant Fire Department.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute. Um, are you there?
Yes, I'm there.
Sorry.
I hear you.
Acting up. Um, I can't remember if I'm supposed to do a potential on the supplemental or an actual, so I'm just going to go ahead and do an actual on the supplemental, because my husband is an employee and they're collective bargaining unit.
Thank you, Counselor Hollit. So noted, we have two potentials and one actual. Is there any other conflicts that need to be declared? All right. Thank you, counselors. All right, may I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution 04-2021, providing a supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2020-2021.
I'll second. This is Counselor Coker.
And the floor is open for discussion. Are there any questions? Oh, that's not on hand. There it is. Okay, with no, with no questions, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Mary, I probably need to read it, don't I?
Well, there is that. Thank you. I am so sorry for that. Go ahead, Brian. Thank you for keeping me in order.
A resolution adopting supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020-2021 and making appropriations. City of Oak Ridge resolves the following. Whereas ORS 294-49471 permits the governing body of a municipal corporation to make a supplemental budget for the fiscal year for which the regular budget has been prepared. If one or more of the following circumstances exists, an occurrence or condition that is not ascertained when preparing the original budget or a previous supplemental budget for the current year, or current budget year that requires a change of financial planning, a pressing necessity that could not be reasonably foreseen when preparing the original budget or a previous supplemental budget for the current year, or current budget period that requires prompt action, funds that are made available by another unit of federal, state, or local government, and the availability of which cannot reasonably be foreseen when preparing the original budget or a previous supplemental budget for the current year, current budget period, a request for the services or facilities, the costs of which is supplied by a private individual, corporation, or company, or by another governmental unit, and the amount which cannot be accurately estimated when preparing the original budget or a previous supplemental budget for the current year or current budget period, proceeds from the involuntary destruction, voluntary conversion, or sale of property that necessitates the immediate purchase, construction, or acquisition of different facilities in order to carry on governmental operations, and volun- property taxes that are received during the fiscal year and budget period in an amount sufficiently greater than the amount estimated to be collective, that such that the difference will significantly affect the level of government operations to be funded by the taxes as provided in the original budget or some, previous supplemental budget for the current year or current budget period. A local option tax described in ORS 294-476 that is certified for extension on the, the assessment and tax roll under ORS 310-060 for the fiscal year or budget period in which the local option tax measure is approved by the voters. A reduction in available resources that requires a governing body to reduce the appropriations to the original budget or previous supplemental budget for the current year or current budget year. The original budget of the municipal corporation is adopted under ORS 294-456, to not include estimated requirements to pay debt service pursuant to ORS 294-477, or the actual requirements are different from the estimated requirements, including the original budget or a previous supplemental budget. Whereas a supplemental budget proposed meets one or more of the requirements of ORS 294-471, and therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Oak Ridge hereby adopts a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2020-2021, and the amounts have shown- And therefore be resolved that the city council and City of Oak Ridge hereby adopts a supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and the amounts shown below for each fund and be further resolved that the amounts shown below as the appropriations for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty and for purposes shown below are hereby appropriated for each fund. You're muted, Mayor. I don't think it'll be much sense in me going through each of the figures unless you'd like me to, and these are off to pull up another, the other resolution.
No, I, I think we will save your voice box. I don't think you need to go through the rest. Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Yes. Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Bjornson?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston? Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
And Hallit doesn't vote, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, counsel, thank you. It looks like we have reached the end, except for public comment.
Mayor? Try Mike?
There were two items that were added by Counselor Kenyon and we kind of, one was a charter and the other was concerning a brief of the admin committee.
Okay, so let's stop, start with nine point two, then? Is it Counselor Kenyon and Counselor Hallit both? Which one wants to go first? Go for it.
I just wanted to point out that Dan Barclay has spoke to the council, I believe numerous occasions, at least since I've been a counselor about our charter. I believe, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he was on the Charter Formation Committee that, or revision that we go by today. Excuse me. And I just think it's important that we know, that we realize the intent of that charter when it was created, and I do think I, I get where, what Dan is getting at in which portion. And when, I, I also wanted to remind that I realize our attorneys are very important to us, but they are also an opinion. And I think when it goes by charter, we should be following what the citizens intended us to be doing, and maybe the opinion isn't always the most important thing that we should be representing. And I just wanted to see if anybody else had anything they wanted to discuss about that in regards with Mr. Barclay. I know he spoke on it multiple occasions and I just think it's important that we, we talk to him about it.
Well, if I may.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I also agree with Dan Barclay. I know exactly what he's talking about. I'm not sure if everyone else is familiar with the scenario, but it has to do with contracts being signed. The, the way the charter is written is unclear and it's been brought up multiple times over the years. Which is part of the reason why this council actually directed the admin committee to do a charter review. Which I will go into whenever it's my turn, but that's all I have to say for now is I agree with Dan. I appreciate his reminders to us about the charter. And that's all I have for now with that topic.
Counselor Kenyon, do you want to go ahead and, and bring up what you were wanting to bring up as far as admin?
Only if no other counselor wishes to comment on what Chrissy said. Okay. So. Can everyone hear me okay? Because I can't hear Kathy very well at all and I'm just wondering.
I can't hear Kathy either.
We can hear you, Counselor Kenyon.
Okay, train's going by.
So in our admin committee. You know, we've been tasked with the charter review process. Excuse me, I just all of a sudden got a cough. And so it came up, actually Brian brought it up to us to talk about in our last admin meeting that the the booklet that's from the National League of charter, or I forget the name of the booklet, but anyway.
Cities, National League of Cities.
Thank you, Brian. They have a booklet on a recommended way to do charter reviews. And in that booklet, it actually states that they don't recommend a council member participating in that process, in the charter review process. Because the charter is a citizen document. However, when we talked about this in, in our committee. We decided that we'd like the council to decide whether or not our committee should continue with the process. And which would involve adding a subcommittee and, and we could make it as big as this council wants. But either that or the the council would need to retract giving the project to us and then open it up to the community to, to create a community citizen-only committee to do charter review. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. And I would love to see that. But I, but I would say that I don't think the council asked the admin committee to be the charter review. We asked the admin committee to come back to us and give us, give us a formula, which is what you've just done, is you've looked and said, what is the best? The best way to do it.
I presented our formula at our last meeting, or not our not our physical last meeting, but this came up, I think early March or mid-March where I presented to the council what the admin committee had come up with.
So now you're asking to revise that and, and that the council should consider doing it a different way?
I'm actually not recommending that the council choose to do it a different way. I'm hoping for council approval to continue doing what we're doing.
Well, I would really, and personally, and this is my opinion, counsel, please go ahead and, and jump in. Is, I would like to see what it is that you're referencing. Rather than just have a discussion, I would like to be able to, to read that and understand the reasons why they're suggesting that council not participate in that. So that would be my desire, counsel. Please chime in. And we are getting, we are at nine oh nine, so let's be cognizant of that.
I agree with you, Kathy. I would like to see the, what, what she's referencing. I'm very visual, so it really helps me to have that information and be able to think about it a little more.
Just so you guys both know, you do have the information. I sent out that book quite a long time ago. If you want, I could send you a reference of the page number that it's on.
That would be great. Counselor Hallit? I see you.
I, it was my understanding that we tasked the admin committee to do a charter review. Not necessarily the whole council, but it was the admin committee who was tasked with the charter review. I, I guess I feel like I understand what we tasked them to do and I don't. Unless I'm missing something, I don't think we should be making any changes. I don't believe that the entire council is necessarily involved of the charter review. My understanding was that the admin committee would be heading it up, but there would be quite a few more players or volunteers opened to being a part of that charter process. Am I correct, Dawn, or incorrect?
I have the same exact impression as you do, so I guess.
How many people are on the charter review currently and how many openings are there?
Okay, so on the admin committee, we have a total of four members. And our proposal to the council was to add an additional I think it was five more members. But after reviewing this sorry, adding five members as a subcommittee specific to the project of charter review, not to the admin committee. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then after reviewing this booklet. We also talked about maybe we would need to make it actually a bigger subcommittee. Including, including specific invitations for people to participate, like former mayors, former police. I mean, not former police. I forget what, but all, the, the, the book recommends types of people to ask to invite.
I'm going to say, I'm going to suggest strongly that, that you bring back this back to council. I think it's important and I really appreciate you guys delving in this, into this. I would ask that you bring this back to council in a written form.
Okay.
What is it the, the committee is, is proposing so that we have it, so that we can, we can keep it and so that we, we keep track of the decisions that we've made rather than just a verbal and then having to dig back through minutes. So if the committee would bring a written proposal, what they're asking us, that would be great.
Perfect.
You asking us to do something different or to do what you're currently doing?
Um, I was asking for the council to make a decision whether or not this project should be tasked to the, continue being tasked to the admin committee. Or if it should change, but Kathy's asking for document, documentation for me to re-present the same topic with the background history stuff included, so you can make a better informed decision.
Okay.
Lost your audio again, Mayor.
Counselor Whitney?
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
When we had talked about this and Dawn, when you brought your I can't even remember what it was titled, the, the page that kind of outlined what your process was going to be. We had provided some feedback on that and I was kind of wondering what parts of that feedback you applied to your process. And so with, when you come back with this information, it'd be great to see that. I know I would appreciate seeing that. And then that's really my, my comment. I just would like to see that as well.
You have enough feedback, Counselor Kenyon, to go back to your, your committee?
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, everybody. Let's see. Let's it's nine oh, nine fifteen. And we've covered a lot, so thank you, everybody. And this meeting of Oak Ridge City Council is adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.